We're just here like 18 hours ago to take this room. It feels really familiar.
Hey.
Hey Todd.
How's it going?
All right, I'll give it.
How was that?
Oh, that's amazing.
Come on, yeah.
Yep.
Do that, just do that. You can send it around in the mail or deliver it to show at the house.
So we're just gonna make our phone call over to Ken.
Uh, Ken did it for us all his entire life. He brought up that uh, he comes up in June. Once Charlie's ready, we'll give us that. Okay? So, welcome to a joint committee meeting of the ordinance committee and the city council of community development and neighborhood revitalization committee. And Brian Pine, Chair of Community Development, Neighborhood Revitalization, councillor for Ward Three. Just two quick introductions, good.
Chip Mason, City Council for Ward Five and co-chair of this committee.
Sharon Buscher, a member of the ordinance committee from-
Sharon Buscher, Member of the Ordinance Committee from Ward One.
Adam Roof, Member of the Committee and CDNR.
Jay Nodel, Central District and Ordinance Committee.
Stan.
Ian Jakus, Justice Policy Specialist with CDO.
Richard Hessler, City Attorney for...
Todd Rawlings, Housing Program Manager at CDO.
If I could just check on microphones. Charlie, do we need to move Jane's microphone over to Richard and staff? Would that be better?
I was actually thinking of moving it this way. Yeah, if you want to slide my...
It's Adam and Jake. Okay. That's... Yeah. Great. If we do. What we decided we would do as a joint committee is present a series of recommendations that will be essentially forwarded to different bodies really, because several of these go to Planning Commission to come back to our City Council Ordinance Committee. Several items go to the CDNR, the Community Development and Neighborhood Revitalization Committee. And what we really want to do is go through the highlights of the recommendations as we have developed them as a joint committee. So, I thought we have our point. My agenda, I'll go through it. Don, can you get Jane to start out? Good, good point. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Don't move.
Any discussion? Changes or changes in agenda as proposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? No objections. And we want also through the joint committee meeting minutes, we have a conference.
Move your documents.
Second to that?
Second.
The discussion changes, corrections to the minutes. Is that it?
Just really good, good job. I think.
Yep, very thorough. Thank you, Stan. Sharon perhaps, but if not, whoever did, did a great job. Okay, all in favor of minutes as drafted? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No objections? It's been adopted. So, the, I think the preferred method is to go through the slide deck. Charlie, I'm going to check if you confirm, does it make sense? Are we going to stand that microphone?
Those microphones work.
Okay. Okay. Sure. What I wanted to point out in the beginning is that the Inclusionary Zoning Working Group, which was established by the council, and the dates are up on the slide, so we'll see those in a minute. I believe all the recommendations that came from the working group, Jane, you can correct me if I'm wrong, were unanimous. There was no dissenting.
That's correct.
I think it was pretty incredible that we also accomplished the same thing for this joint committee. I don't believe we had to take a vote on anything, did we? I don't think we did. So, there's no minority opinion, there's no, we reached consensus on these recommendations. So, I think that's an accomplishment in and of itself. But what we'll do is we'll go through these and we'll hit on the key points. So, the work group was created by April 2017 council resolution. We started meeting in September of 2017, and we finished up our work this past July. What we are charged with doing is reviewing the recommendations that came from a January 2017 consultant's report. And the goal was to identify the pros and cons of the recommendations, assess financial feasibility. When we talk about that, we really mean financial feasibility of development in Burlington with this requirement as essentially a cost of development, to prioritize recommendations, identify supporting partners, and address other implementation issues that we'll discuss as we get through this. The work of the working group was jointly referred, or referred to be considered jointly by the Ordinance Committee and the Community Development and Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, the council, and we met four times over the last three months. The membership, as laid out here, included Councilor Nodel, who served as Chair of the Inclusionary Zoning Working Group, a representative from the Planning Commission, that's Bruce Baker, two for-profit residential developers, Eric Hoekstra and Eric Farrell. You had to be Eric to be chosen for this.
Yeah.
Several non, two nonprofit housing developers, Nancy Owens from Housing Vermont, Michael Monti from Champlain Housing Trust, two affordable housing advocates, John Davis and myself before I was on the council, was nominated or was appointed in that role. And the CDO Director, or the Designee, Noel McKay, served pretty much throughout, I think, for the whole time, I think.
Up until the very end.
Yeah, yeah. And the Planning Director, or the Designee, but it was David White participated. And I just want to acknowledge the staff support for this was very well done. It was really Todd Rawlings and Ian Jakus who provided a great level of support for the work we did. Couldn't have done it without them. So, it's important, I think, to look back at what was the legislative intent. 1990, this was a five-year debate process that the City Council engaged in starting in 1985 when this first came out of the mayor's Affordable Housing Task Force, those are recommendations. And it took quite a while to get both community and political leadership consensus around what we would do. We brought in a national consultant who spent better part of a year with us developing this ordinance in 1990. And the legislative intent is really important, I think, to remind ourselves, to create housing opportunities for all of Vermont's citizens as required by state law, to ensure the provision of housing that meets the needs of all economic groups by concluding construction of only market rate housing, unlimited supply of available land within the city, and to improve the quality of life for all residents by having an economically integrated housing supply throughout the city. So, the reason why I want to focus on this for a minute is it's often said that the ordinance hasn't produced a lot of new affordable units, when in fact, if you look at the goal, production, actually counting how many units you produce isn't necessarily the most important piece of the intent. It really is to ensure that there be some supply of affordable housing within the private development that would occur, that without the ordinance theoretically would not have the affordable units. Next. So, key element of ordinances throughout the country that are really the sort of, you know, critical components here when drafting an ordinance, well, you look at really, what's the percentage and what's the number of affordable homes in any given project, and affordable to low and moderate income is usually what's the goal. So, in policymakers, look at this type of ordinance, we're looking at which projects are covered, does the law apply to all projects or only some projects based on their size or perhaps their location in a different zoning district? How many? How many affordable homes must be included by ordinance? And for whom? So, how should affordable be defined and for what duration? Other options are such things as can the developer meet the obligation in an alternative method such as, other than onsite, which would be a payment in lieu, or offsite, affordable homes being developed elsewhere? Next. So, a quick and dirty summary of the consultant's recommendations. The consultant essentially said, "Address which projects are covered." This was the consultant's belief that we should exempt more small projects from the ordinance and increase the project's size threshold basically that triggers the ordinance. We'll get to that when we talk about the recommendations. How many units and for whom? Allowing developers to build more units but for higher income households than the current law, or fewer units but for lower income households than the current law. And that's a, that was a question more than an answer, I think, there. And other options are to create a more meaningful payment-in-lie option, which allows developers to meet their obligation by making a payment to the city's housing trust fund instead of building the affordable units that are required onsite. Next. So, this summary recommendations is, goes back to the earlier slide of who is covered and how many affordable homes. The joint committee recommends, like the Inclusionary Zoning Working Group, that there be no change to the current ordinance in regard to which projects are covered. It is any housing development of five or more units that triggers the ordinance. The joint committee also recommends no change to the current law about how many affordable homes are required. So, that's a minimum of 15% of all dwelling units must meet affordability requirements in the waterfront zoning district. That's not just the waterfront as we know it, but it's a zoning district that extends, in some cases, pretty far up to the hill. The 25% of the units must be affordable to low and moderate income households. If a targeted, I'm sorry, if a project is primarily targeted as what we consider high-end housing or luxury housing, and that's defined in the ordinance, that required percentage actually goes up. So, if you're going to provide very high-end housing, your obligation increases as a percentage, and it could be as high as 25%, no matter where you are in the city, based on the market rate units. So, for the ordinance purposes, there is a very specific definition of affordable and affordable to whom for rental units. We, the joint committee recommends no change to the current law. Price rental units that are affordable to households at 65% of area median income with owner-occupied units, so homeowner units, condominiums, that that, we're actually recommending reducing that income level from 75% of area median income to 70%. We'll talk a little bit more about how that will work when we get to that. Other options to meet this inclusionary housing requirement, the payment-in-lie option, the current ordinance essentially gives the Development Review Board the discretion to determine that unique and difficult or challenging site conditions prevent the construction of onsite inclusionary units. Then the DRB has the option of allowing the developer to make a payment instead of building units, subject to City Council approval. This does not get triggered much at all, despite the popular mythology in Burlington that lots of developers have built their units, have paid out of building their units, that that's actually not the case. And I hope people really spend a little time understanding that, because you do hear this notion that we've allowed lots of developers to pay instead of build housing, and that's just not the case. The payment per affordable home not built onsite, so that payment in lieu of building the affordable unit, in the end, it really comes out to a price tag that is approaching $180,000. We did the math during the IZ working group, and that was viewed as, if not, it's more than just a deterrent, it has a major chilling effect on that. That particular option isn't actually a real option, it's just a theoretical option, we believed. So, we tried to address that in our recommendations. This is what the consultant said to lower the payment-in-lie, as I was just discussing, that it's too high to be considered a real option. It's much higher than the cost to the developer of building the onsite units. And as evidence, it's too high, it hasn't been exercised in over 10 years. We feel that it's an important option, well, the, I'm sorry, the consultant opined that this option ought to be provided, it ought to be something available because it allows for flexibility for developers, and that the revenue generated can be used to support other affordable housing development through the housing trust fund in other locations. Next. So, the joint committee, I believe in every case here, yes, we follow the IZ working group again here, so I'll just run through them quickly. The payment-in-lie option is one that is presently not viable, but it ought to be made a more feasible option to pursue, it ought to be a real option as opposed to one that's just on paper. We agreed, the joint committee agreed with the IZ working group, that the payment-in-lie should be available by right, but on a restricted basis. And by right just means it's not subject to the City Council, or a city official, or the Planning Commission, or really any other city body or individual. Restrictions on the payment-in-lie option are based on the size of the project and the location of the project, and this is where things get a little complicated, because this is a new concept for Burlington, and I don't know how many other places do it really, but we didn't, we got the sense that it's doable, we think it's feasible, to base your requirements, what you can do, whether you do them onsite or offsite, based on location, and we'll talk more about that. No payment, I'm sorry, no payment-in-lie would be available to projects in the waterfront zoning district, and that is a continuation of the existing policy that was based on the idea that this is a waterfront for everyone, if we're going to be meaningful about that, we need to make sure that affordable homes can exist side by side with market rate. So, that can't be done offsite. Next. So, the joint committee offers what we think is an innovative recommendation, we have to give credit to the working group because it was developed there, but we think we actually made it, fine-tuned it a little bit based on the mayor's input into how it should be done, and we'll come to that in a minute. It really is an attempt to address the challenging economics of this requirement, which is in our zoning. For smaller projects, given that there's pretty significant fixed costs involved in developing housing, whether you're building four or five units, or building 40 or 50 units, there's a lot of fixed costs that have to get spread across those units. So, we're trying to recognize that smaller projects infill is a good thing, we want that, we encourage it, it's a smart growth principle, but yet, the ordinance may be a real deterrent, is what we believed, then, in smaller projects, and we heard the economics of that pretty glaringly. We also found that the concentration of IZ units built to date is largely in neighborhoods, has taken place in neighborhoods that already have a real mix of household incomes. So, we're succeeding in getting affordable units built, but primarily in areas that already have lots of affordable housing to begin with. So, what we try to deal with is that issue of spreading, sharing this opportunity and creating choice for people to live in neighborhoods that would otherwise be out of reach for them economically. Next. So, for the smaller projects, which we define as five to 16 units, that the payment-in-lie should have a payment-in-lie option, except if the project is in the waterfront district. And that payment per unit is $35,000. We thought that was a reasonable number after discussing a number of considerations as to how to arrive at that. There actually is no scientific method we could find anywhere out there, so we tried to go up with something that resembled a reasonable number that would allow the housing trust fund to support more new units, but also was not too too high that it would be a real deterrent.
And it's by right.
By right, exactly, that's a by right. The medium-sized projects, which are anything over 16 units, so it's 17 to 49, are considered medium in size, and they pay more per unit, which is 70,000 per unit, and once you exceed, once you get to 50 and above, you're paying 85,000 as an in-lie payment per unit. This recognizes, of course, the larger projects have more units to spread those fixed costs over, so this requirement doesn't hit larger projects the same way that it hits the smaller projects. What we wanted to point out in that last sentence there, only the incremental units pay the higher rate, and I wasn't sure if incremental units is clear to everybody what that means. So, what it means is, if you have a 17-unit project, those first, based on the math of 15%, the first two units are charged at a $35,000 payment, and that extra unit that's required after that is at the higher rate of $70,000, until you reach a larger number of units, and then it kicks up to 85,000. So, I think it's, it looks complicated, but we can probably show it pretty easily in a spreadsheet. So, medium and large projects can only use the payment-in-lie option for projects located in parts of the city that have inclusive neighborhoods today. So, if your project is actually located in a less economically diverse part of Burlington, the requirement's going to be to build them onsite. That was a policy decision, which is a new approach, or I think it's a new component in Burlington, which I think really recognizes that there are neighborhoods in Burlington which have not necessarily embraced or taken their fair share, and there's a lot of reasons for that, land values and density and underlying zoning restrictions and things, but we felt this was a way to try to at least ameliorate that issue a bit. Next. So, the rationale for the IZ, the payment-in-lie, again, it addresses the difficult economics of the smaller projects while capturing some resources for the housing trust fund to support affordable housing elsewhere, addresses lack of neighborhood inclusion shortcomings... support affordable housing elsewhere, addresses lack of neighborhood inclusion, shortcoming of IZ to date in Burlington, and our data does show that, the city's data, I should say. So while it has succeeded in fostering inclusive buildings and projects, if you will, or developments, hasn't necessarily fostered inclusive neighborhoods across the city, and that clearly was the intention, so this is an attempt to get at that. It allows payment for market rate housing to be leveraged with other funding sources through the Housing Trust Fund to support the creation of more homes, and in fact, more deeply affordable homes than would have been built onsite. And that's an important piece. The density bonus proposal, which we are advancing to the Planning Commission, really looks at, addresses the fact that in many cases, developers have not been able to utilize the existing density bonus, despite being required to comply with inclusionary. And remember, it was viewed as like a trade-off or a carrot and stick. The stick, if you will, was you have to build the affordable units, but the carrot was, we're going to give you a bonus, so you can actually get more units on that site than you would have otherwise gotten. And that was part of the contract, if you will, that the public made with the development community, was, we're going to require this of you, but you're going to get something back in return, that's hopefully going to ameliorate some of that financial hit on you. And that was really an important part of the discussion, and it has been lost over the last 28 years, maybe? The Joint Committee endorsed the Working Group's recommendation that developers be granted by right density bonuses as a result. And so final language from the Planning Commission, should address the provision of by right density, but still ensure opportunity for the DRB and the DAB to seek modifications to a project to address site plan concerns and architectural design standards. So I think Councilor Buescher asked several times, does this by right mean that the DAB and the DRB can't address these issues? And it was clear that that wasn't the intention, so we wanted to just put that out there, that when the Planning Commission develops their language, they'd be doing it with this as their charge. And if there may be one more slide or trigger. Unit comparability, I think I described this hopefully accurately, which I didn't, that the IZ units be basically at par with the market rate units in size, and I think that's how we ultimately came down on that one. Compliance monitoring, my least favorite subject in this ordinance, but it's important, it's critical. And right now, it's done by CDO, and there's some discussion with the New Department of Permitting Inspections would be carrying out that duty. That remains to be seen, I think, it'll be decided. I believe that, oh, that desert part of ordinance change as well. I think, right now, yeah, I think so. All right. Increasing funding for affordable housing is a concept that the consultant recommended, the IZ Working Group liked quite a bit, the Joint Committee certainly endorsed the idea, but we didn't have a specific proposal, so at this point, it's being referred to Community Development Neighborhood revitalization to come back with a specific proposal, given what we have on the plate. Right now, I don't think we'll be doing that right away.
And in the minutes, and I believe they're accurate, I pointed out that the funding that we have right now, the Housing Trust Fund, the money that we have set aside, is not in the charter, and so I'm hoping that this will start the conversation about what is the right amount, and then to make that in the charter, so it's not in jeopardy.
Thank you, that's a good point. We tried to grab it with this last bullet item, privately-developed university housing, built outside of the institutional zoning district. So it's not housing built on or near campus, but it's housing really built in the community by private developers, for sole intent is to be occupied by students associated with one of the institutions of higher education, that those really ought to be treated similarly to how the Development Review Board treated Champlain College, which is, provide us some documentation showing us that the income mix of your incoming students meets the inclusionary requirement, and as long as you stay in compliance with that, you're okay. So, Richard, is there one more, or is that it?
There's one.
Okay. So, questions, I think we need time to, questions or comments? From the committee, really, from the public, because this is all here.
I think we should go to the book.
I have two.
You've got the floor.
I have two.
Take the mic, please, come up and take the mic.
Yeah, come on.
Just because it's on television.
Got it. I have two questions, and just, you know, for the record.
I'll take the mic.
And to clarify, I guess I should identify myself first for the record. So my name is Erhart Monka, I live in Ward 1, and I'm here speaking on behalf of both myself, as someone who helped draft the original ordinance, as well as on behalf of the Vermont Affordable Housing Coalition. Clarifying questions, I have two, just, thanks for that really clear presentation, on the density by rights issue. So, does that include the lot coverage increases as well as by rights? Because there is a lot coverage bonus under IZ as well.
That would be included.
So that would be included. Okay, great, I just wanted to clarify, because it wasn't mentioned, I know the presentation was high-level, but I just wanted to make sure. And then, the other thing that I was going to ask was, the issue with the off-site development, and I think this goes to the mayor's comment letter about there's sort of a cliff there in the brackets, and I'm not sure I quite understood how, what the committee recommendation was to address the mayor's comment of that cliff.
Try to explain it as simply as possible, that if you build a project of five to 16 units, your requirement is 15% of those, right? So when you get to 16, that comes out to 2.4, or 15, it comes out to 2.4. So once you exceed 16, the number kicks up to another unit, but you pay the in-lie fee for those first two and the lower, you pay the incremental rate.
Right, so there's a big jump, and my recollection of the mayor's letter was that, I think there was a recommendation to not have it be that large a jump, to figure out a way to make it not quite as large.
I believe that was, we decided as a committee that we were okay with keeping it where it was, and what we wanted to make it clear, that the in-lie payment for the first two was at that lower rate, because that's what we don't.
Okay.
We didn't take the rest of the mayor's.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for those clarifications. I'll just say for record, again, Erhart Monka, Ward 1, and for the Affordable Housing Coalition, just to say that we support, followed the workroom process, really supported the really thoughtful work, and the diligent work that went into that, supported the recommendations, also appreciate the Joint Committee recommendations, and support those. The one thing that I've raised in the past, and I'll raise it again, and I know everybody's wrestled with the issue of basing the, since we had the large jump in the area median income, it resulted in a large jump in rents just over the last year, and that actually puts the rents into a much less affordable range. I know you all wrestled with that, and no one really came up with an alternative basis for use, you know, for the affordability, alternative to the area median income, and, you know, that would be challenging, challenging to find something. One of the suggestions that was discussed was the idea of figuring out some way to smooth large increases from one year to the next on the area median income, and I don't think there was ultimately a resolution of that, and so, our recommendation is to, we don't have a specific recommendation on it, I just want to say that we still think that that kind of smoothing needs to happen, and we would be happy to work with the CDO office or with the committee, as its recommendations go to the City Council at some point, to come up with a methodology for helping to smooth that. That was really the most substantive comment I had, just that, I think that still needs to happen. One smaller thing that just occurred to me is remembering, I haven't looked at the zoning maps all that much lately, but I do seem to recall, and so this goes to the issue of the applicability to student housing. The institutional zone is pretty large, and includes neighborhoods adjacent to what is traditionally considered the university campus. So just a, kind of from a neighborhood perspective, a comment would simply be, I'm not sure the institutional zone is the best criterion for kind of setting that, as a boundary, because, again, there may be, for example, development of student housing that is not on campus, but is actually in a neighborhood, but still within an institutional zone, that I think probably should be subject to the inclusionary requirement. So that would be another thing to maybe really get into a granular level of detail of looking at how those boundaries work, and whether there's a better way to define that.
Thank you. Yeah. Since we have a fairly small crowd, seems like we could have a discussion, unlike both public hearings, where we just take public comments. So, Councilor Nadel, you had a point to make in response to one of the comments.
Well, thank you very much for those comments. I think there, we did talk about income smoothing, and we do have to, I think we should, maybe tonight, we were going to do, if we were going to do some deliberation, I think it'd be good to talk about that. And I think the point about the institutional zone is a new one that we haven't really talked about, and I think it'd be worth going back to that a bit. And then I also think we need to look at the map of less, we have two options in terms of the map, and we should look at that as well. But we did really grab it with this issue of what, how do you set the rent? What's your basis for setting the rent? And it just said, we just kept coming back to that area median income, because it's, as imperfect as it is, it seems like the best option that we have.
I guess, thank you for that. One thing I forgot to mention was, and I had said this for, at the workgroup meetings, and it still remains a comment that I forgot to mention, which is simply around the 65% targeting requirement for 65% of area median income affordability for rental units. So having really not been able to come up with a better criterion, I would still say that may be, looking at that 65%, and possibly reducing that to 60, is still, remains one of my recommendations. I do understand how the recommendations from the workgroup were kind of a package deal, and how moving any of those, that kind of a significant number, would cause problems in terms of consensus. But for the record, I feel like I still need to state that, because even with smoothing, you're still going to have a potential, maybe not for the kind of jump that we saw this last year, but you will still have potential for increases that might be disproportionate and render the requirement really unaffordable to the folks that it's meant to be afforded.
What's the pleasure of committee as far as taking those three items that the Councilor Nadel just highlighted? The income smoothing, whether we consider the institutional zone and the map of the designated areas for inclusionary, in what order, or do we have any troubles?
Are there any other issues? No, I'm in agreement.
Pardon me?
Are there any other outstanding issues?
Are there any that staff want to highlight for us?
Well, so, although it was agreement on almost everything, I think I did note that I was not, I had not agreed with the elimination of parking in all areas, and I had concerns about that, and how that relates to projects that may not require, not provide parking with units, but make the resident pay for them. We had a conversation, that's reflected in the minutes. And I just want to note that I believe that those details need to be worked out, it's in the record, and I'm not proposing that we hash that out, but I just wanted to make sure that that was reflected, that there was that outstanding issue. I think everything else, I think we all agreed upon, but for me, parking was not something that I could absolutely rubber stamp the recommendation for.
And in follow-up to that, I think that this consensus of the committee was that in cases where the developer is, I think they're going to be required to present their parking plan, of course, so in that process with the DRB, the DRB should stipulate that the cost, the added cost to residents for parking be factored into the calculation of the affordable rent in the ordinance, that was our intent.
I think that was discussed, I don't know if that was the, I don't know.
So if they charge $50 to the inclusionary units, that's extra to their cost, and it really ought to be essentially pulled out of what would be the rent that could be otherwise charged to the tenant, because that's a cost, that's part of the housing cost, really.
So I would, in order to give direction to planning, who hasn't been here, and the commission who will be looking at this, I would ask the committee or the staff to formulate that clearly, so that they understand what the intent is, or what we'd like to see happen, so that when it comes back to the ordinance committee, they'll weigh in on it, they may agree or not agree, yeah, whatever, but that's what I would request, because I don't think that's really clear.
I'm looking to talk to Lacy, if he thinks that would be something that would be not that hard as far as implementation. Because you're, yeah.
So, just to clarify, the intent is to include the cost of parking into the maximum gross rent, is that correct?
When is charge started from the units? Yes.
From a monitoring perspective, that could be challenging only insofar as it relies on sort of a self-certification, but I think administratively, my memory was that at the last meeting, that the committee had expressed that that would be challenging administratively. But I'm happy to dig into that more as we move through this process, and give the Planning Commission and Ordinance Committee more, just a, doing a deeper dive into it.
I think it would be good, I just think that they're planners, they hopefully would understand what our goal is, and they could look, reach out and see if there was a way to put that in place. And if it's impossible, that's information we need to know also, and take that back and consider if there are other options, but thank you.
Sounds good.
So there's really two separate issues on parking. One is the zoning requirement, the other is how you deal with the cost impact on the tenant. Okay, and so just to make sure I understand it correctly, in terms of the latter issue, if you are someone who is eligible for a new IZ unit, and you have a car, and the owner charges for parking, then the rent should be lowered, so that your rent plus the cost of the parking is no more than 30% of area median income.
That's ideal.
That's ideal, okay. So it's, if there's turnover, is that kind of the administrative difficulty? Yeah?
Yeah, and I'm just sort of thinking out loud here, in terms of the equity between a household that doesn't have a car, are we saying that essentially that there should...
They should pay more rent? No. Yeah, it's not ideal.
What we're saying is that they, that if you have a car, we're making sure that if you're in an IZ unit, there's no cost to you, essentially, because it's being deducted from the gross rent calculation. And so, in a way, we're incenting folks, perhaps, to have cars in these units. But then, I think the tension that we talked about last time was that we're removing the requirement for parking for IZ units, but in a way, we could be incenting more parking in these units, or more cars.
Yeah, so you're right, it was a catch-22. I had said, well, maybe the money that's put in that pot for creating more affordable houses, the payment-in-lie, could be utilized to subsidize the cost of parking for those individuals that qualify, and there would have to be criteria. I don't think it's simple, but I still feel that in one way, it's not fair if you're giving people a break because they have a car and they're paying less in rent, but in another way, it's not fair if they need a car to get to their job, and the parking makes it unaffordable for them to live there, so nothing's fair.
We could be, we could be simplified, I'd say that inclusionary units get the discount... We could be, we could be simple by saying that inclusionary units get the discount for parking regardless of the household's circumstances, that might be simpler. So, right now, when you, let's just do simple math for that. Rent is $1,000, I'll just say for inclusionary rent. Utilities are $100 a month, that is actually taken off for most landlords because they don't provide utilities, so the real rent is $900. And if parking was another 50, it would be $850 with the inclusionary rent. And that would just be it, whether you're a car owner or not, inclusionary rent is now $850. If you're being charged, if you're otherwise being charged for parking.
So that would require staff to do a survey of mark, of parking cost for the market rate units on an annual basis and make modifications to rents.
Or self-reporting, if that could be done through self-reporting.
It's, I think it would need to be.
Yes, exactly.
That, I'd like to think about a little bit more about how that might actually work.
Sure. Do you confirm the rent through by asking tenants to fill out a survey? Is that one of the methods you use for monitoring?
No, I think that's the intent as we move forward. The first, the first year that we did it was really to get a baseline for, just to ensure that landlords were aware of the ordinance and to do some self-reporting. I think over time, we want to start doing more risk analyses and do deeper monitoring, so.
I don't know if this is a possible solution, but to avoid all that administrative difficulty and to avoid actually making it part of the rent and creating that kind of inequity, you could perhaps just simply prohibit a charge for parking for an inclusionary unit. And that would maintain rents at the same level, people would have comparable rents. It doesn't eliminate the kind of incentive to somebody in an inclusionary unit to have a car even if they don't need it, but it gets rid of you having to do a rent survey because if the tenant gets charged rent, all you have to do is come to CDO and say, "Hey, I'm not supposed to be charged rent for the parking." Can you explain that whole equation of calculating rent?
My only concern with that is it not smack into our disincenting, you know, people from getting cars and driving, you know, we have competing public policies here and I'm not sure there's a middle ground to thread. I mean, I hear what you're saying, that is a simple solution, but it is inconsistent with our policy of disincentivizing, you know, if I don't have to pay for parking, why wouldn't I have a car?
There may be some incoming.
Fair enough, absolutely. I did know from Champlain Housing Trust, I did confirm this after our last meeting, that they do charge in their downtown buildings. I don't think out, when you get out to Lake Thayer, which is out of North Avenue, but I think in their new development at Cambrian Rise, which is the old Diet Street Spur and College. It's considered to be an optional thing, so it's not a unit. Some of their essentials, like they don't, they don't take, they don't take out cable, for instance, because cable's not an essential, but your utilities are because you have to pay for heat and electric.
That'll be an additional charge.
It will be, yeah.
Probably because of the premium of the space.
Exactly.
As opposed to being out in Heinsburg.
That's right. And not wanting people to have two cars too, that's one of the reasons.
Well, I would just request that we identified that this is an unsolved problem and if there are any other insights, would appreciate that. Obviously, no matter what we do, we create a problem.
Okay.
Anyway, thank you.
And to avoid the law of unattending consequences as much as possible, right?
Absolutely.
So, the issue of the institutional zone had never come up until tonight, that was a new one, which raises a good point. And I can think of an example, we have the Fort Trinity College campus that's in the zone, actually, I just consider the campus house, maybe that's not the best example. The modern, or the Sisters of Mercy property, I'm afraid, will be up for sale at some point and that's in the zone, I think.
It is.
That could be one, that's not on campus. So that could be where institution partners with the private developer, they come and build 400 rooms that are for students, enrollment goes down, they go market rate and now we don't have any way to capture inclusionary from that zone, that's a problem.
But even greater than that, I feel, this is like, oh my God, it's like you're taking, ripping off the scab here and the wound here, is that the boundaries for the institutional zone are far greater than what the institution occupies and it has tentacles that include neighborhoods. And so, I think that, you know, I've been caught in the middle of this for so many years and I don't know if Ward 6 has the same issues, but Ward 1 certainly does. So, I think that you would be precluding the creation of some affordable units if we don't address this in some way.
It's a new issue for us, so I'd like to hear other people's thoughts on this.
Is anyone in the room able to get a map up where we could see the institutional zoning over, it's an overlay district, right?
It's a district, yep.
Yeah, so right now, our recommendation says applies only to purpose-built student housing outside of institutional zones.
Housing built within the zone is not covered by the ordinance, always has been there.
And the zone is bigger than the campus, that's the...
Quite a bit.
Yes.
Is it in Ward 6 as well? Karen, can you help?
I think so, not much. They call for it. I think part of the difficulties, we don't, we didn't have representatives from either institution to know, I don't know whether this threshold is, might be sensible, maybe incorrect, because this is not a problem, I think this is not a hurdle, you know, based on their mission of admitting all students as part of the financial need.
Good point.
Getting this hurdle, not a problem, but we didn't hear from them on that one.
I did invite them tonight, Joe should be here any minute, he wasn't invited. Is it blue, Andy, do you think it's, no, it's blue. It is the blue?
That's the instit-, wow.
All of that, all that blue?
That's what I'm telling you, yes. So that's why I'm sharing with all of you that this is a big deal in Ward 1.
I think we should think about redefining.
Oh, I would love assistance there.
Not changing, I mean, for the purposes of the IZ.
I know, I know.
I mean, maybe also that, but I think that stay within our lane here.
I want to go outside the lane.
I know, I know you do.
So, I'm not sure, Councilor Nadel, are you, I mean, one option would be, which would be, I think, a big change without much notice to people to, you know, right now, we're saying in the IZ zone, that they, I mean, excuse me, in the institutional zone, these IZ don't apply. One option would be to say they do apply, you know, regardless. I would have some concern that that may be, what I'm wondering is, is it possible, and I appreciate we want to do it all now, but is that something that we might direct the ordinance committee or someone to look at?
Yeah, I think that's...
Above and beyond, I don't want to tackle something that imperils this project, but also recognize that it's been identified as an issue and maybe something we could tackle at the ordinance committee next.
Yeah, I'd be very supportive of that.
But I think that there is one way to address part of this, is to redefine that the inclusionary zoning doesn't apply to housing that's built on the campus as opposed to the zone. And so, to me, that is the way to address this in the short term. I would love to look at the big picture, but in the short term, why not define it that way? And I would love to hear the institution's response, I don't think that that would be inconsistent with really what they're thinking also, but I'd have to hear anyways.
Would you consider Trinity campus, that next to campus?
That would be, UVM bought that, so yes, unfortunately, I would consider that their campus, much to my chagrin, but I'm saying within their campus, within their boundaries, that, that was a college and they bought it and it remained a college or a university. So I'm not really trying to open the door for challenges, I'm trying to make sense out of it, but keep it within their boundaries so that on Fletcher Place, let's say, it's, let's just say, it's not, it's, any property that they don't own is not, even though it's in the IZ, you know, they would still, would still have to be able to meet inclusionary zoning, I mean, you know what I mean? So anyways, I just think if we could define it by their campus boundaries, would be okay.
So one, as I'm sitting here thinking, this would really only apply to UVM because if this passes, Champlain will be required to comply.
That's right.
And that test will apply regardless of where they built. Meaning, they meet, they meet the 65% or not and they're required to meet that for the current development. So if they built another one regardless of where it is, they're still gonna have to comply. So really, this is only a UVM issue.
May I just say, and the only reason I'm proposing this is so that there's clarity regarding, regarding this so it can move forward. I understand the disparity between what I'm proposing versus what the criteria for Champlain, I do get that. But if UVM was to now take over Marty Christie, they would have to do the same thing that Champlain was doing because now it's outside of their campus.
So, just to be clear, would we be drawing a line out sort of campus? Because my assumption is if UVM were to make that acquisition, they would consider that part of their campus at that point in time. So my question is sort of, is it the campus as it exists today, locked on the ground or is it...
Well, I was, actually, I was thinking it was the campus that's defined right now. That's what I was thinking. I was not, because how do you prevent creep from the institutions? How do you contain them if you allow them to buy up all the property around themselves? So to me, it would be their existing boundaries. I was trying to be simple on that. I don't know if that's okay or not, Richard wants to say something else.
I'm just recalling that Champlain had a memorandum of understanding for a 20-year period and that when they actually purchased the land down for Eagles Landing from the city, the city struck this deal because it was outside of the defined area of their memorandum of understanding and that was the leverage that the city had over them for purposes of forcing IZ. I think we really have to explore, as Mr. Mason said, how to go about altering institutional requirements for IZ because, you know, they're, they're going to talk about how they've relied on that exception and the fact that they should be able to redraw the boundaries of their campus.
I don't think they should.
I understand that, I'm just saying, I'm saying it's probably a conversation that really needs to be developed with some thought over time.
And we don't have the other party at the table, so we should, I think, I think in the interest of all, we should probably, we've seen our position, should just move on to the next.
All right, that was easy, let's go to the next topic.
So just, you know, just a reminder that we're supposed to now report to the council and then the council takes a vote on directions to the planning commission, right? So, with income smoothing, I mean, with any of these, we could just say, we want, we want income smoothing to be factored into the rent setting because this will get to ordinance and we will be doing line by line. So if there's some stuff, we can just say, we're gonna deal with it then. We're really into very specific language, you know, or you could just say five, I think a five-year moving average would work or a three-year moving average. Like, it wouldn't be moving average because you always have the last year. Three years, five years?
Yeah, three years would probably, that would plus you consistent with the way that you're referring to already.
Yeah, so why don't we just, I propose three year.
So minutes will reflect that and that will be shared with the planning commission?
I mean, five years is too long because, especially behind the rising rents, one should kind of reflect the circumstances.
Right, so like, for example, in 2019, when time comes to set the, reset the rents for 2019, you would look at the average of the area median income for the years 2019, 2018, and 2017, you would average them and you would calculate 65% and then set the rent to be affordable to someone at that income.
So, but what I heard, and so, this is not my world, all of you know far more than I do, but what I heard was that there was a spike one year. So if you have fewer years to smooth, that spike's gonna play a bigger role than more years. So if it was five years and only one of those years was a spike, you could soften that. If it's three years, it, as I said, it's gonna play, it's gonna impact more, so I don't know.
That, Councilor Bush, you're absolutely right. However, in five years, you're seriously behind.
Don't forget to say, don't forget the part about Counselor Busher, you're absolutely right.
For the record. The problem is if you go back, if you do a five-year average, you're seriously behind where people's incomes are.
Okay, yeah, all right. Listen, the reality is when it comes to smoothing averages, they can work with you and they can work against you. And, you know, certainly when we're always talking about retirement smoothing averages, we always use five. Well, not always, but it's usually five.
Recently, yes, two to five.
It's more conservative.
Yeah, yeah, you know, you know, there's always that, there's always that problem of that really ugly year that you want to get rid of and with five years, it takes five years to get rid of it. But, you know, that's just the nature of smoothing averages. This is not my world, the housing world, maybe there's, maybe three is better, you know, you spend much more time dealing with this than I do. I just, three years is, to me, not even, I mean, it is a smoothing average, but just barely to me. I mean, you can only talk about three variables, so you're not smoothenable a lot. But, you know, again, I would, I guess we could leave that for the ordinance committee to weigh that or if you, you know, obviously, the best thing to do, which I think would take a lot of time, and I'm not sure that anybody wants to do it, would be to take the last 15 years and see what a five year is and see what a three year is and see if that, it really has been affected. What's that?
That would be a lot of work.
It would be a lot of work. So I don't know if that's really the answer. Probably the better answer is to ask experts.
Staff, I'd like to hear what you think.
I think CDO would be happy to do that kind of analysis, unless I'm misunderstanding it, that doesn't sound that scary to me. So we'd be having to bring that to ordinance. I would also point out that although there was an 11% spike last year, I think the year before it went down almost 3%. So, I'm not sure if that's an argument for five years or three years necessarily, but...
Joe says it's very volatile.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's an argument for five.
It is, actually.
I think so too.
Avoid that volatility.
Right, because, I mean, the idea of a smoothing average is to get rid of those volatilities and if you've got down three, up 11, and then I don't, whatever the next year is, you're gonna have a fair amount of volatility.
All right, another easy topic. I think what we're saying though is we want the planning commission to come back with a recommendation, it'll go to ordinance after that, so I guess we just include that in our recommendation if they come up with a...
Three or five years. So this goes to planning, then it goes to ordinance?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't, I should have said that at the beginning.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, well, I...
You weren't here, but that's okay. I should have pointed out that our approach tonight is to take a number of, really, anything involved with the zoning ordinance is gonna go to the planning commission with our specific recommendations. They're gonna come back to the council and then it goes to ordinance to work out the details at that level.
Okay, all right.
I believe the planning commission will come up with actual ordinance language though, right? Through their ordinance committee, right?
So like, for example, this issue of the smoothing average, that would go to planning first?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, so that would hopefully make the lives of people on the ordinance committee a little bit, maybe, a little bit easier.
Still gonna have to go through it all.
Yeah. But at least he'll have already had a pass through.
First pass.
Okay, all right.
If I could, Ian, Todd, Richard, if you could just answer that question of sequencing here. We're going tonight, we're bringing this to the council as a slate of recommendations. It then gets referred, primarily the action items that deal with the ordinance get referred to the planning. They take it through their process, which we believe is ordinance committee of the planning commission, then it comes back to the council, then it goes through the city council ordinance committee, and then it comes back for final adoption. Is that the sequence that is going?
Right, we go back to the council, coming from the planning commission for first reading and referral to the ordinance committee.
Right. Or the council could place an all state to the pass.
Right, because you've been through a lot.
I'm assuming, they won't, they will, you know, first read, refer to ordinance committee for further hearing, and then back for second.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
That, that's how, I think, we walked through it last night here.
Yeah, I think it's worth stating it again.
I went over that with, with Kim Sterther this morning. She agreed.
Okay, great. Okay.
Is this going on Monday? Is this going Monday?
I believe we are planning to bring it Monday.
Okay, all right.
We have a resolution drafted?
It's in, it's in witness queue.
Okay, all right.
I just told her to hold off in case there was any change.
Okay. Just curious, did we, did we share the resolution?
I don't think so.
Yeah, okay.
People being kinda quiet.
Oh, you'd like us to speak up for the crowd? Okay.
Yep.
All right, use your outside voice, guys. Ready? Next.
The maps.
Maps, the map. Go. Okay, we have two maps in front of us. The map that's titled Proposed Designated Areas for Inclusionary Zoning Based on 80% Area Median Income. What essentially allows is for the, it allows for off-site units to be permitted in more areas of the city than the other approach.
Well...
Isn't that really what it ultimately, because it's less inclusive areas?
Okay, so in the, so the white areas are more inclusive areas?
Yes.
Right. And our payment and lieu option says, if your project is in a less inclusive area, you get the payment and lieu by right.
No.
Nope.
No, it's a more inclusive area.
So, so if it's in a more inclusive area, you have the payment and lieu by what, by right? Yes. Which is the white areas on both maps.
Right.
Okay. So the big difference between these two maps is that in the 100% AMI, there's more white area. Because you're defining kind of the moderate income as 100% AMI, instead of defining it as 80% of AMI. So I think it has the effect of expanding the, the payment and lieu by right geographically.
Quite a bit.
As compared to the worker proposal of 80%.
I like the 80%.
I think the 80% is better.
Yeah, this map is very stark, just for those who can't see it, because we have it in front of us and you don't, it really exempts or allows off-site in the entire New North End for once.
Off-site and payment.
And, yes, yep. And it expands it in the South End a fair amount. It considerably doubles, it almost doubles in the South End. So, really, about twice as much land area in Burlington would be areas that could essentially move the inclusionary units by right to another area.
Either through the off-site option, or through the payment.
Yeah.
Through the payment. Which may or may not be to an area outside.
Right. We don't know where that's going. That's unknown.
There will be none of them.
Yeah.
So to me, the 80% allows more units to be spread throughout the city versus the 100%. That's what I see.
Yes, yeah.
So there would be more inclusionary units that would have to be built, because they are less inclusive, which means they can't move them off-site, right? Okay. That's what I thought, so that's what I like.
Do we, do we have this map that we can look at on the screen, or no?
Not at the moment. I'm trying to get it.
Okay, no problem.
Sorry.
It's, I mean, these are sort of tiny, but...
And you know, Charlie, do you wanna try to focus on one of these with the camera? If we bring it over?
If we get it on the screen, that would be ideal.
We can just tape it right through this table, hanging down.
Oh, you can do it that way?
I can.
Got some tape, tape this table.
Oh, okay.
Now, you have to do both of them, actually, side by side.
Brian, here. Here, Brian.
Just a warning, you might need a magnifying glass to see the actual streets. We have, we have council perspectives that we haven't heard a whole lot of what folks think about the two-year conference. I think there was a, the administration perhaps was advocating for one approach over the other. Is that where this came from?
I think the mayor's memo suggested 100%.
100%. Yeah.
And what, and do you, do you remember what the, was there a reasoning behind that? So I, oh, yeah, I mean, I'd just be, just be interested.
You have the memo, council reason?
I just gotta find it.
Okay.
Keep talking while I...
John, is, you have another?
I think the, the main point that the mayor was trying to make was that 100% median is rooted in the ordinance as the maximum household income, that you can qualify for an IZ unit. And so that it was appropriate to be tying our inclusion to, to the actual ordinance language.
Yeah, right.
To, so a household, regardless of what the, the rent is, or the purchase price, the, which is based on 65% median income and 75% median income respectively, the actual household income can be up to 100%, according to the ordinance.
Actually, plus putting a household...
Household, exactly. So the notion is affordable to, but occupied by, a different income level.
Yeah.
And the idea was, is, and this was a recognition that the market has a lot of movement and incomes change, and we didn't wanna saddle developers with the responsibility to have, to fill their units, to make their expenses, and to make the project feasible, didn't wanna saddle them with such a small band of people. We wanted that band to be a little bigger, so they had a larger share of the market that could be allowed.
Yeah. So that's where the 80% is at?
It goes up to 100% of the ordinance to allow that, to allow just more flexibility in the implementation, and who actually gets the units, who wins the lottery, so to speak.
So he said, we further recommend that since inclusion can be allowed...
Is it allowed?
You read this, I didn't hear what you said, but this is, okay, regarding the proposed areas which would determine whether an in lieu payment or an IZ unit could be located off-site, given, given that the income limit is defined in the ordinance references median income, we support that these areas be defined by 100% area median income instead of 80%. We further recommend that since inclusion can be defined by factors other than income, the areas be designated senses below median AMI area and senses above medium AMI area.
Counselor Plin?
Yeah.
So I'm a little, I'm fairly concerned about using the 100% map, just because our, when we get into the court of public opinion, because we've created the payment and lieu by right, the more expansive geographic area for payment and lieu by right makes it look like we're okay with almost all the requirement being met through, through payments to the housing trust fund, which I don't think we want.
That wasn't the intent.
It wasn't the intent. And I think that if, a real strong point of the proposal as it evolves is that this idea of inclusivity, inclusive neighbors across the city, and I think the 80% just accomplishes that much better than the other.
Way to put it.
It's my own view.
Yeah.
I concur. I mean, I, I really feel that, that this map spreads out affordable units throughout the city, which is the goal, to have them in every neighborhood and to, and, and people have different areas of the city they'd like to live in, and as they develop, if a development comes in, I would like to see that met in that section of the city. People like the New North End for a reason, people like the South End for a reason, people like the Hill section for a reason. And I just, I just think it's more in keeping with what the, the original intent was, which you defined at the beginning of this meeting. Thank you.
Other councillors?
As the council group, what, did say, let him know if we get into votes or things like that. It doesn't feel like, doesn't feel like we've been at the voting level, but if everyone thinks I should let him know that you should come up. Okay, I'll ask him to come up.
Well, my own opinion is that we do, I mean, part of the whole purpose of this is to promote inclusionary housing. And I do agree, Jean, with what you said, that, you know, there's a lot of white on the other map. I think we may very well be sending, not be sending the message that we really wanna send. I, I don't, I don't know if, you know, I mean, I, it, it does appear to me that there are areas of the extreme New North End that appear to be very popular now, particularly for people moving into Burlington. It's one of the few areas where younger families can, can afford to, to live, to own. If this helps, if this helps that, then I think that is a good thing. So I, I don't know if you, I mean, if you wanna take, if you wanna take a vote, if you, if you do, I would, I would go with the 80% map.
I think you have a consensus.
Okay, great.
There's a, there does appear to be a consensus.
Okay.
Yeah. Adam, keep doing the did.
He's battling down here. He's battling down there, so we'll send him our best wishes.
Play an army down there. Yeah, well, it'd be usual.
All right. I think we had, I need to keep that list, Jean, you wrote down whether, was there one more out of it?
That's it.
Okay. Wow. Okay. Great.
I do, you know, I do think that when it comes back to ordinance, the issue of the institutions is, is a difficult one. I mean, I've heard, I've heard, you know, your position on that, I understand that. I've also heard the university's concerns about the fact that they sort of do that internally. You know, I don't know if they do enough of it internally. Maybe if they don't, maybe that's the way to affect that change without, you know, without unnecessarily rocking the boat of a good, a good partner in many other things that the, we do with the university. So, you know, I, I don't know how that's gonna, and I'm not on ordinance, but I hope that there will be an, a real effort made to engage them and figure out if we can get what we're looking for without it being overly burdensome on anybody. I, I don't know if that makes sense, but I hope that we'll be able to figure that out, so.
May I just say that what I put forward, I thought was generous, because I was saying no, because I was saying to acknowledge that they, it was excluded from their campus boundaries only if they came outside. And I understand the only concern that we addressed here was if the university bought additional property, would that expand their boundaries or not? And that was really the only thing I heard that was, that was unknown and maybe controversial.
Well, actually, that, that's a good question, so, for those who, you, you would know the answer to this. If the university, if the city council determines that someone, that the university, I mean, Champlain has done this, I'm, I'm trying to remember of an example where the university has recently, the university decided to buy property outside its zone, it would have to come to the council, they would have to agree, no. Champlain has done that.
Champlain had a different, and, and so I tried to get, so the, the planning and zoning department at that time felt that that was, that was put into an ordinance that they felt was inappropriate, and so they would not do it when I tried to get that for the University of Vermont. They felt that that was legally erroneous, and so it would, they would not replicate that. So there's no, nothing to preclude them, if they buy it, then they own it. That happened at Fletcher Place, so it, it's sticky. It is a sticky issue that I think the community really should resolve at some point, and it's, and we're just tiptoeing around it because of this. But I was just trying to say, if you, if you have housing, if you build housing on your campus boundaries right now, this doesn't apply. If you come into the neighborhood, it would, even though it was institutional zone. Yeah. That was my point, yeah.
Did you want anything, Richard?
I'm not sure that I was clear before, but the Champlain was limited by...
The MOU.
The MOU.
Original 1994.
And that expired in 2014.
Right. But that was also written into the ordinance years ago, there was a reference to the MOU, so that's why, that was a mistake, according to all legal people at that time.
Okay, this issue will definitely generate some considerable discussion, I think, as it goes through the process.
So, so Brian, you could just sort of, maybe even for the benefit of the, of those who are listening, so the timeline is that the work of the joint committee as, is, is to the best of our ability completed, and then if you just sort of...
Talk it through.
Talk, talk out the timeline, so people know, and when there's also going to be other, when there's gonna be other opportunities for public input.
Yeah, the, the joint committee work, I think, commences or finishes tonight, and we meet, we met the deadline, which is the end of December, and will be bringing it to the council next Monday. And the process will be, once the council takes action next Monday, for the planning commission to get the items that were referred to it, and the community development and neighborhood revitalization committee will take the items that are referred to it, and take those under advisement and take action as appropriate, so that, there's no actual known dates at this point, except to say, Counselor Busher may know how busy the planning commission is, because she keeps a better track of them than most of us, but they...
They've been preoccupied.
Yeah, they have been, yeah. I think the, so I think, I think that there's a, there's a shared understanding, and I think a shared commitment, that these issues, this process has been going on for a while, and that we should try to move with all due haste as appropriate.
But this will come to the city council.
But the public will have lots of opportunities, because the planning commission is a completely open public process. City council ordinance committee will take public comments throughout the process, the city council will debate it. We are really about maybe halfway through the process, but not the timeline, I think. We're much further along than that.
Okay.
Just one clarification, when it goes to the council, is there going to be a, a public hearing on this, or no? Because it's not really anything, it's just an action plan. So it's just, okay, so it will be an item on the agenda for this Monday, the 17th, and the public can speak at public forum regarding it. Okay.
And in terms of the materials that will go with this item, we'll have the resolution, the PowerPoint, this spreadsheet?
The maps, or the maps.
The map.
Oh, sorry.
The 80%.
80% map.
80% map. And is the...
And the PowerPoint is going to the council?
I think it's printed out, printout of that, is what I'm saying? Yeah. Or, I'm sorry, this is not printed out, just electronically, yeah, yeah. Ian has the model copy of that.
And can I, or can we reference that in its entirety as, PowerPoint is the report, the spreadsheet is attachment A, and the map is attachment B?
I think this spreadsheet is the report, is the, in terms of what gets forwarded, I think it's...
That's comprehensive, that's everything, it's on.
Spreadsheet.
Yeah, PowerPoint's really just a little strip of...
And the map is an attachment to the report?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
The, the spreadsheet?
It's a good way in, yeah.
I think the PowerPoint, that, the map and the resolution, is that it?
Yep.
Okay, yeah.
And all of that will be available. I'm just asking, just confirming, on the SITO website in the next couple days, maybe?
Yeah.
Yes, great.
Right away.
So, this is attached to the resolution.
We need to vote to move this out and to the council?
I'm looking at the co-chairs here.
We know, we're all with it.
Just didn't know.
Now, we're dealing with administrivia, I'd like to call it.
I'm sure you all know, but it can get a little dicey.
It can, yeah, but, yeah. I just didn't want Charlie to think we were leaving the public out of something really interesting.
Well, thank you, Counselor Pine, for your fearless leadership on this.
And Counselor Mason.
And Counselor Mason, and also, too, Counselor Nodel for chairing the IZ work group. I went to a couple of your meetings, you really got down into the weeds, it was, they were, they were challenging meetings with a lot of, a lot of voices at the table, but I think you ended up with a good, a good product at the end, and I know you spent, you and Counselor Pine, before he was Counselor Pine, spent a lot of time on this. And also, to Todd and to Ian particularly, for the enormous amount of work that you both did on this. When we said, when we said, "Oh gee, I wonder if SITO can do that work," and, "Oh, sure, we'll do it," and God only knows how many hours that took, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else from staff or committee members?
Just a clarification, so, 5.1, recommendation five should read that, right now, it says, "Consider using 100% of AMI." Should that read, "Use 80% of AMI"?
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And 5.1, there, was there consensus around this?
5.1?
Essentially, it's just the name change piece. I just wanna be, I just wanna be clear about that.
What is the suggested name change again? From what to what?
Are you talking about instead of more inclusive than less inclusive?
Yeah. Oh, I see, it was the above median and the below, or the...
Yeah, the, the mayor had recommended...
What do you think about that? I don't, I think less inclusive is descriptive, it actually tells you what it is. So, maybe we can be a little, can we do both? Could we say?
Yeah, I think, no.
Yeah, less inclusive is above 80% of median, in parentheses, more inclusive is below 80% of median, is that?
It's 51%.
Oh, it is? Oh, so it gets into detail. Yeah.
Is there, is there, are there other communities that use different language?
So, the mayor had wanted census below median AMI area and census above median AMI.
Those aren't the right terms, those actually don't...
And it becomes irrelevant to be using 80%.
Right, exactly. Yeah, only if it was 100, yeah.
I think this is as good as it gets.
I think let's just stick with it.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's terminology, but I think it's, it's just, it's descriptive, so I think it makes it fairly clear what we're talking about.
Counselor Paul, I, I'm not aware of a, another jurisdiction that is, that has mapped inclusion the way that, that we have. It may be, it may be a common thing, but I, I just haven't seen it, so...
It'll become a new best practice after this. All right? I think we pulled it off in an hour and a half. Thanks for remembering the public joining us tonight. Those who didn't get a chance, you'll have plenty of opportunities, but please do avail yourself of the future opportunities as they come up.
Our agenda does require new business and new adjournments.
Yes, yeah. Thank you, Chip. Is there a motion?
New business first?
Would you, do you have any new business in front of this august committee?
Oh, just some housekeeping. One of the, one of the homework items that, that we were tasked with was to contact Michael Monti and ask him to connect with the mayor around this change from 75% to 70%. I'm not aware that the mayor continues to have concerns about this. My understanding is that that conversation took place. So, unless the mayor's communicated directly with the joint committees, then, just wanted to close that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, do you need to vote on adopting this, or...
Chip and I just, we, we just sort of discussed it and said, we're, we've reached consensus, so we don't see a need for a vote.
Okay.
So, is, is there a difference if, do you guys think a vote is needed, Richard? Do you think a vote? Rather have a vote?
No, no, I mean, I think what we have is, the only person, if you want the names of the individual, I can just put the joint committee as advanced resolution, or I can approach Mr. Rue separately, but the way to do it is to say that the joint committee has advanced the resolution.
Wondering about that?
Yeah, that's really good, yeah.
And...
Yes, keep it simple, thank you.
Anything further, business?
I will move to adjourn.
Second?
Second? Who's in favor?
I.
Any votes? All right, the eyes have it, it does.
Thank you, Adrian.
Something exciting going on in the park.